Good evening. We do have a member of the Minister's Alliance with us tonight. Jalen, would you please come forward?
Let's turn to Lord in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we are so grateful that we can gather here, that you have created this space for us so that we can enjoy your creation, so that we can seek your ways of love and peace and grace and mercy. Lord, we pray that you will lead and guide the conversation, that you will bless each person here. And, Lord, we are just so grateful for your son, Jesus, who gives us life and shares your ways of peace so that we can live them out within our community. Thank you for the unity that you brought us. In thy name we pray.
Amen.
Please join me for the fudge allegiance.
Fudge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call the July 17th, 2025 Board of Alderwomen meeting to order. City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Pam Pope. Melissa Johnson.
Here.
Rachel Kilmer.
Here.
Tracy Newcomer. Kelly Netto.
Here.
And Mayor Dana Webb.
Here. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is new business deletions or continuances. We do not have any of those this evening, so we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is public comments. City Clerk, do we have any?
There are none.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. These items are considered on the consent agenda so that members of the Board of Alderwomen, by unanimous consent, can designate routine items to be approved by one motion. Tonight, we have approval of the June 23rd, 2025 Board of Alderwomen meeting minutes and expenditures through July 2nd, 2025.
If I make a motion, will you approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business. We do not have any unfinished business this evening, so we will move on to new business. The first item for new business is a public hearing regarding the proposed annexation of property into the city of Oak Grove located in Jackson County, Missouri, generally at 40110 and 40202 Northeast 3rd Street. Matt, do you have a report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, the city has received a petition for voluntary annexation for two properties generally located at 40110 and 40202 Northeast 3rd Street. To approve an annexation, state statute requires that the Board of Alderwomen make three affirmative findings. One, that the property is contiguous and compact to the existing city limits. The annexation is reasonable and necessary for the proper development of the city. And third, the city has the ability to furnish normal municipal services within a reasonable amount of time. The voluntary petition for annexation is two parcels combined into one petition with two separate legal descriptions. Tract A is approximately 10 acres and tract B is 22 and 1/2 acres. The petitioners are a Daniel and Kendra Porter and a Brett and Yen Porter. They are brothers that own both parcels that have requested to annex both of them into the city at the same time. In your packet, you'll find the description of the property as well as a image showing the area to be annexed. City Limits is in purple and the annexed territory is bluish color, kind of a blue-green outline. This is from the county's website, so it's not quite updated. The parcel immediately to the south of this was also recently annexed. It was about 30 acres that was annexed, but it's not yet been updated by county GIS. So, based on the location of this property, as well as recent annexations that have occurred, staff has determined that the three requirements under state statute have been met. The property abuts annexed territory and there is utilities located for the proper development of the property, as well as to help for the proper development of the city. State statute provides that upon approval of the ordinance, the annexation will become effective unless there's a written objective objection filed by at least 5% of qualified voters in the city or two or more qualified voters in the area to be annexed within 14 days completion of the public hearing. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. At this time, ladies, do you have any questions for city staff?
What is it currently zoned and what will the zoning be if it's annexed in?
Currently ag and would...
Will it still be ag? I don't have any questions.
Members of the public who wish to offer testimony regarding the annexation may step forward at this time. Please state your name and address before your comments. I now open the public hearing. Since there are no public comments, I now close the public hearing. And the next item on the agenda is discussion, consideration, and possible action for Bill Number 25-11 regarding an ordinance providing the annexation of unincorporated territory located generally at 401101 and 40202 Northeast 3rd Street.
I move for first and second reading by title only of Bill Number 25-11.
My second?
We have a motion and a second for the first and second reading of the proposed ordinance by title only. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. City Clerk, would you please read the full title of the bill two times?
An ordinance providing for the annexation of unincorporated territory located generally at 40110 and 40202 Northeast 3rd Street, part of Section 28, Township 49 North, Range 29 West, and the extension of the corporate limits of the city of Oak Grove, Missouri, all pursuant to Section 71.012 of the revised statutes of Missouri as amended. An ordinance providing for the annexation of unincorporated territory located generally at 40110 and 40202 Northeast 3rd Street, part of Section 28, Township 49 North, Range 29 West, and the extension of the corporate limits of the city of Oak Grove, Missouri, all pursuant to Section 71.012 of the revised statute of Missouri as amended.
I move for adoption of Bill Number 25-11.
My second?
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of Bill Number 25-11 for ordinance. Any discussion? If not, City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Pam Pope.
Yes.
Melissa Johnson.
Yes.
Rachel Kilmer.
Yes.
And Kelly Netto.
Yes.
The motion is approved and Bill Number 25-11 becomes ordinance number 2137. The next item on the agenda is discussion, consideration, and possible action for Bill Number 2512 regarding an ordinance of the city of Oak Grove, Missouri, to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest. Is that you, Matt?
It'll be me. This is just the annual conflicts of interest ordinance that we file for the Missouri Ethics Commission.
Ladies, any questions for Kim?
I move for first and second reading by title only of Bill Number 25-12. Second?
We have a motion and a second for the first and second reading of proposed Bill Number 2512 by title only. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. City Clerk, would you please read the full title of the bill two times?
An ordinance of the city of Oak Grove, Missouri, to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interests of certain municipal officials. An ordinance of the city of Oak Grove, Missouri, to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interests of certain municipal officials.
I move for adoption of Bill Number 25-12. Second?
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of Bill 2512 to ordinance. Any discussion? If not, City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Pam Pope.
Yes.
Melissa Johnson.
Yes.
Rachel Kilmer.
Yes.
And Kelly Netto.
Yes.
Motion is approved and Bill Number 2512 becomes ordinance number 2138 and is adopted. The next item on the agenda is discussion, consideration, and possible action for Bill Number 2513 regarding an ordinance approving the cooperative agreement between the city of Oak Grove and Mid-America Regional Council. Scott?
Yes, so this is our annual contract. And if you remember, last year, we went for additional funds by expanding transportation reimbursement costs. We performed all the criteria that we thought was necessary, didn't come up with any violations, and it netted about almost a $2,000 increase. So, did not get anywhere near the potential $20,000 that we thought we could get, but we did get some. We will continue to work on that, try to get more. Mark has informed us that funds are getting less available to them from the federal government. The numbers that they have or the numbers they generate that we have no control over, the meals that get served to the people are not, we don't set those meals. We don't approve who gets meals. We just administer the program, take the meals to who they say is getting them, and then we prepare the, plate the meals at the center. Does anybody have any questions about it? It's really, it's not an agreement that we have any say in. It's, we literally are partnering with them to help them with this meal program that they provide.
Do you still have the phone calls that you're getting for people that are asking to be on a waiting list?
We've had a couple. And I know some, some people have volunteered some assistance on their own at the center. Some people have offered to help people who call in. We have kept track of that information and Camille and the ladies in Lancy or Lacy are working hard to help assist with that.
Good.
I've not had any call since in some time about continuing issues or... So, hopefully, they've seeked and got the relief that they're needing. But I have, I have not had anything recent.
We direct, at, at the Senior Center, we do direct them to call Mark and go through the process for the application.
Absolutely. We give them all information. At times, we've even assisted with some of that process that they allow us to assist with. In the event they're told no, we then seek other ways that they might seek local assistance. There's some churches or some other people who have volunteered to help.
Sure.
Do you know, is this an income-based program?
Yes and no. I mean, someone, it has to do with the health of the person as well. That, yes, that's, a lot of the criteria, I don't know. I don't...
Sure.
But they, they have a scoring system that they apply. Then they're also limited on the numbers that they could send out. They can't saturate one area too much and stuff like that, so...
Scott, I heard that these funds were going to be cut. The chamber in one of their latest meetings mentioned, there was a legislature lady there that mentioned that the dispensaries funds latest disbursement, they had about $3 million in funds that were going to be available for certain populations. And I'm wondering if this is something that, that you could apply for funds for? Like, the difference that you're, you said you're going to be down $750, was it?
So, in this situation, Mark is our advocate for that. Mark reaches out, applies for those grants, and then they administer it through the cities, the county that's in their jurisdiction. So, we had the advocate for that through Mark. That's really what their focus is of that organization is strictly for that.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're the ones that handle that. So, I attend the Mark Board of Director meetings, and at this time, funding is still available. But with anything, it can change, you know, if it stops anytime or be frozen. But right now, it's still available.
Okay, good.
I would just like to ask that, the numbers are rather drastic, the drop from 25 to 26, as far as what they'll be able to provide, and I understand it's federally funded. I'm, I'm just wondering if we can search for some outside nonprofit assistance for those that are not going to be able to be helped?
And, and one thing I know that they would like for me to share is through COVID, the COVID year and the following two years, the numbers, they had so much extra funds that they, they said nobody. And so, their numbers got really high. And they've gone back to their pre-COVID standards on who gets what meals and stuff like that. And they've had to because of funding and in addition, the numbers wouldn't work with what their funding was coming in. But with the so-called free money that they had, they'd said no to, they never said no. And so, now they're applying those standards to save the program, and that's where these numbers fall for us.
I understand that. I just, it calculates to a very small number of households. There has to be more households that are asking.
Sometimes it's based on the number that, our requests that come into them as well. And it...
There's not a lot that we can do about it.
We can make a phone call to, to ask.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Scott or city staff? If not, this is an ordinance.
I move for first and second reading by title only of Bill Number 25-13.
My second?
We have a motion and a second for the first and second reading of proposed ordinance of Bill Number 2513 by title only. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. City Clerk, would you please read the full title of the bill two times?
An ordinance approving a cooperative agreement between the city of Oak Grove, Missouri and Mid-America Regional Council to provide certain services to elderly residents within the city and authorizing the mayor of the city of Oak Grove to execute the first amended agreement Number 13731 OG 25. An ordinance approving a cooperative agreement between the city of Oak Grove, Missouri and Mid-America Regional Council to provide certain services to elderly residents within the city and authorizing the mayor of the city of Oak Grove to execute the first amended agreement Number 13731 OG 25.
I move for adoption of Bill Number 25-13.
My second?
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of Bill Number 2513 to ordinance. Any discussion? If not, City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Pam Pope.
Yes.
Melissa Johnson.
Yes.
Rachel Kilmer.
Yes.
And Kelly Netto.
Yes.
The motion is approved and Bill Number 2513 is approved, and it is now adopted as ordinance number 2139. The next item on the agenda is discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding a request to amend Section 210.108. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, we're seeking consideration and, and board direction in regards to enhancing our endangering the welfare of a child ordinance and the fact that our current ordinance does not allow or provide for holding a parent or guardian responsible for neglect or refusal to provide proper support and education required by law. If you look at the First Amendment that was added to that as our current language for Section 210-180, which is endangering the welfare, Item 3 under A, while it lists a lot, we would like to address this whole paragraph and that is a more straightforward because it becomes very confusing in the Paragraph C of subdivision 1 of subsection 1 of Paragraph 4. You have to have the state statute open up to even know what that means. And so, we wish to address just the wording of itself, but we wish to add the parent responsibility. And where this comes into play is if a child has a truancy issue, we will initiate the paperwork to have the child go through youth court. Youth court is a great program, restorative justice, have them address the concerns. If it continues to be a problem, and we've gone through the youth court endeavor, we're in a position of a truancy charge is going to be very hard for us to present to Jackson County Juvenile Court or authorities. Our truancy problems in a small suburban community aren't going to rise to the level of, of Jackson County Youth Court. They're just not. And so, they're going to funnel it back to us. And as we continue to deal with that, we need the parents to take responsibility for that and that it becomes their responsibility as well as ours to make sure that that child is in school. And we don't address that in our ordinance as the state statute allows. And so, we just wish to add that. Is this a common occurrence? No, it's not. It's, it's less than counting on one hand a year and probably less than counting on two fingers a year. But when we need it, we need it. And when we don't have it, we're left with a situation of we've tried everything we can. Please have the child in school. And so, this would be the same way that we would address the 14 or 15-year-old who's riding motorcycle on the street or driving a car. You can't hold the 14 or 15-year-old responsible for that. They know it's wrong, but it's the parent who receives the citation. And so, for this infraction, it would be the parent, if it becomes a disciplinary issue that has been, that hasn't been resolved with other means. So, it's not a first-step endeavor. It is down, down the road to where we've tried everything else. Now, we need to bring the parents in and hold them responsible. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
From what I understand, you've been in communication with Superintendent Hampton?
Yes. I have spoken with Ms. Hampton as well as Ellen, our city prosecutor. And we have looked at the wording and, and just looking at this paragraph in itself has kind of caused everyone to say, oh, yeah, we need to change that just itself. But yes, both are in support of changing the ordinance and adding the parents to the responsibility.
Very good.
What does that look like? Like, what is the hard line of once you missed this many days? Now, you're at that line, and now they're going to talk to the Oak Grove Police Department.
It's probably going to be in a step three that, and even maybe further down in the sense that you're going to receive notice that you missed. The second one, you're going to be going to youth court. The third may be readdressed by youth court, and now that has stepped up. We would still present it to Jackson County to see if they would accept it, but most likely, they're going to yellow-sheet it back to us.
Sorry, I don't think I'm, what is, like, how many absences? When it, like, does it take to get to this point, to where this becomes a problem?
Well, therein lies the difference between an absence and a truancy. And, and being able to, and that's the district policy of how it's related to. Is that an excused absent or just a flat-out continual absence? So, yeah, that's, that's a determination that they have to make. And that's when it becomes that conversation between the school resource officers and the district of, we have a student that's missing nonstop.
So, the district triggers this?
Yes.
When it's gone from just missing a lot of school to truancy?
Yeah.
I have two other questions. One is, is this wording in most municipalities, you know, code in our area?
It's a 50/50. It really is. I added one independence as theirs and that being on the bottom to where it addresses it in their jurisdiction. It's not in every jurisdiction, no. But some jurisdictions will not, say Lee Summit, Lee Summit does not have a policy to address truancy at all. That relies on the school district. Blue Springs, the same way, since they have the school district police department. Some agencies just do not address it.
And then, I guess, follow-up question that before I get to my last one is, is there, like, a philosophy why? Or, like, is there, or is it just kind of an oversight? It's just always been that way, and they've just never changed it, kind of thing?
It's just always been that way. It's just never changed, yeah.
Okay.
And we're, we're into a, we, and I don't know when the change is, and the captain and I can say, you know, we've dealt with this for a long time. But just the idea that we're called upon because Joey doesn't want to go to school and we can't come to the house in the morning in police regalia and patrol cars to make your children come to school. Parents need to be parents. And so, this strengthens that responsibility.
So, my last question is, I actually have personal experience with this with a dear teenager in my life, and the parents begged and pleaded with both the school district and the local police department to help them, and they wouldn't or couldn't. What resources are available for parents before we get to the point of issuing a citation if they are really trying to get their child to school in camp?
Well, I think if they're working with the district, that's going to be a noticeable thing.
Okay.
This is, and I don't want to bring any families into, into this setting, but this is truly the non-compliant, we are not engaged with our child.
The parent's not even trying. Okay.
Correct.
Got it.
And, and it's one of those things that, how do you describe that? But when you see it, you know it, type of things.
And, and, sorry, I keep, it just kind of feels very vague to put it, something in writing that's like, well, when you see it, you know it. So, what is the, like, is it the school district and the police department have to agree together? Or like, is there a certain...
We are completely working together on any of these encounters. So, the school district takes those first steps, and then they engage the SRO, either one of them Officer Bob or Officer Jason. And then, they further that paperwork that we have tried these steps. We have encountered this resistance, and that's how it's moved on. If they're encountering those parents that wish to work with them or are seeking out resources or have sought out counseling, whatever it may be, this isn't an endeavor where we're going to go for the truancy on the parents. So, that does, they have to be engaged in those steps, both the district and the SROs.
Who initiated this process? Was it the school district or was it the...?
It was really the, I will put it on the SROs and the, of working with the school district because they got to a point with a particular case where there was nothing else that we could do, and we were not getting the support. We're getting the support from the school. We got support from youth court. Jackson County didn't feel that it rose to their level. And so, it was trying to get the parents to understand that they had a responsibility.
I guess I feel like I don't really have enough information to make an educated decision on it because I, I think I want to see this district, those steps you're talking about that it would take to get there. Because my concern is that this could really become either actually or the appearance of playing favorites or not favorites versus, you know, if it's that subjective. So, I, I'm all for it, but I just want to see, like, a chart, you know, that like spells out the steps that it takes to get here. It's kind of, I think that you're thinking the same thing.
I 100% agree. I've personally seen it, though, when there's not clear guidelines, the favoritism being played, and it's way too vague. I need more, in my opinion.
Not the police. No, no, no. Yeah. I mean, even everyone could be operating easy and with the best of intentions, but it just could cause an opportunity for finger pointing of, well, the district's been out to get me or the police have been out to get me, kind of thing. Versus if it's spelled out in black and white, like, well, these are the steps, which it sounds like you guys have. I just want to see them before I...
I think our, our role tonight, can I speak? Our role tonight is for the city, for the amending the section. We wouldn't vote on what the school guidelines are.
Yeah, I'm just not comfortable amending.
And that's where I'd like to say that, while I'm seeking direction and consideration, we won't be able to enter steps into, if an ordinance was ever approved, would not contain the steps by the district to be taken before this. So, that would be an understanding of just how the district handles the process.
Okay.
Is that, is that what you want? It's just more clarity on what the district's going to do before you amend something?
Well, yes, and because, because it sounds like it's like it's an, it's a collaboration between the police department and the district.
Yes.
And I understand there's a lot of finesse to that. I totally empathize with you guys' position, but it just, you know, the, most likely, the kids that are going to be in this position are going to be more vulnerable population. And so, I just feel like the more clear we can get with it before we vote anything better.
Okay, understood.
We could, we can put it on our agenda for our next collaborative meeting with the school district.
If they would be involved and maybe an SRO was there too, that would help, I think. Help us understand how it looks in real life, you know?
Yeah. It was already, it was on there, but we can put it on the, the fall one.
That works.
Okay. All right. Then we will just move on from that one, and will city staff please collaborate to add that to our, our meeting with the school district right now is tentatively sometime in September?
Okay.
We haven't picked the location or who's hosting. We haven't picked the location or who's hosting, but we could do it then. Go ahead, Chief.
Nope.
I was going to ask, by us kicking it to September, are we causing an issue with a particular situation that you guys are trying to address?
No, not at all, not at all.
No, this is just him going through and then seeing something just as the officers had talked about. And if you recall what Chief said at the very beginning, there's going to be one or two. It's not something they're getting 10 to 20 of these type of calls or reports. These are just one or two, you know, situations every so many years, maybe. I mean, it could increase as time goes on and years go on, but right now, no, correct?
No.
Other thing I wanted to say is, I'm sorry, I have a flappy jaw. Melissa and Pam, did you guys have thoughts that I just flapped my jaw over?
Not at all.
All right, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding ADUs. Mr. Randall, do you have an update?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So as we've gone over this, I know several times now, and I appreciate you all having thoughtful discussion on this. So at the last meeting, there was some discussion from the board about the building separation requirements detached versus attached, as well as the front setback, and then some thoughts on the utilities. So in your packet, I've got some proposed revisions to the draft ADU ordinance based on that discussion and motion from the June 23 meeting. Didn't bring back a full ordinance, because I thought it might be best to have some more discussion on these points. And then if there's some clarity on whether or not this kind of meets the motion, then we could certainly bring back a full ordinance for approval. So just going through the summary of changes, so the big one is to allow for ADUs to be attached to the primary structure. Previous ordinance just had detached, so the summary of these changes is to allow attached. And if attached, the entrance to the ADU must be located at least 10 feet behind the front facade of the principal structure. And the ADU entrance shall not face the front of the lot as defined in Section 405.500 of the municipal code, which is, the front of the lot is defined as the portion of that lot abutting public right-of-way. If it's on a corner lot, the code is whichever portion of that corner is the narrowest piece. That is the legal definition of the front of the lot. So then the ADU entrance would need to be not on the front, so then either the side or rear, and 10 feet behind the front facade. So looking through the proposed changes, if you go to subsection five, you'll see in red strikeout the deletions from the previous ordinance, and then in the bold underlined, the proposed additions. So the ADU separation, building separation, ADUs must be detached from the primary structure. That was deleted. So now it reads, "ADUs shall be located at least five feet from any structure, including the principal structure, provided that this requirement shall not apply to attached ADU with regard to separation from the principal structure. If attached to the principal structure, ADU shall meet minimum fire code for two-family dwellings. R 302.3 is adopted by the city. That's our newest, newest presidential building code requirements for firewalls for two-family dwellings. So that if you are totally separated and detached, or attached in this case, but separate, there would be time, if a fire broke out in the ADU or the principal structure, vice versa, for the parties to get out. There was a question at the last meeting about the five feet for separation for detached. The fire code is five, if equal to or greater than five feet, so five feet does meet the fire code. Then going down to subsection seven, the change is there. No ADU shall be located within the required front setback. And then detached ADUs must be set at least five feet behind the front facade of the principal structure that was retained. And then added language, if attached to the principal structure, the entrance to the ADU must be set at least 10 feet behind the front facade of the principal structure, and then as defined in that subsection. Going down to subsection 11, a change there was added to take into account a potential situation where somebody takes an existing square footage home and converts a portion of that space to an ADU. That 40% ratio applies to the remaining principal structure. So that way, the 40% ADU is always applied to whatever the principal structure is. So for instance, if you have a, say, a 2,400-square-foot home, and you want to convert 800 square feet of that into an ADU, at the end of the day, you now have a 1,600-square-foot home and an 800-square-foot ADU. That 800 square feet is more than 40% of 1,600. So you would have to, when you come in for a building permit, you'd have to show what your principal structure is going to be, and what the AUD will be, and stay within that 40%. So that remaining there is to take into account that possible scenario of doing an attached ADU where you cannibalize a portion of your existing structure. And before that didn't, wasn't an issue, because they had to be detached. But now that can be attached, that remaining was added to subsection 11. And then going to subsection 16 for utilities, the electrical and fuel, gas connections, if, even if it's attached, still need to have a separate emergency disconnect located on the exterior of the building. But looking at when it was a detached structure, the water line was going to have to be bored underground to the detached structure. And at that point, if you're already doing a new water line, it wasn't that much more difficult to have them put a vault in for an emergency water disconnect. But if they're attached, and say the plumbing's already interior to the structure, they would have to bore through the foundation, go below the frost line, add a vault for emergency disconnect, and then turn that water line back around. That seems that just adds additional fail points. When if it's an attached structure, and the builder has decided to not do separate utilities, so they've decided to keep them combined. If there's ever an issue where the water has to be disconnected, it can be disconnected at the water meter, and both the principal and the ADU will be out without water for whatever amount of period of time it takes to make that repair. So they could avoid that situation if they want to do individual separate utilities, but if they choose to keep the utilities combined, there's a potential risk that both structures might lose water in the case of a water break or something interior to the home. So in section 16 utilities, the water disconnect was added for detached ADUs. Attached ADUs would not be required to have a water disconnect. So those were the changes made to the code, to the proposed draft ordinance, to add attached ADUs as an allowable accessory dwelling in residential districts. With really the primary differences here in this code is making the attached, the entrance to the attached ADU 10 feet behind the front facade, and then on the side or rear. So with that, happy to answer any questions you may have on this draft ordinance? Any changes you'd like to see? This is really a discussion. And then probably, you know, again, if there's changes you'd like to see, a motion with those changes, and then we can bring back an ordinance at the next meeting.
Thank you, Matt.
It looks good to me. Thank you for your hard work. I know this is cumbersome. It looks good.
Pam?
Yes, a couple. The, it says shall meet fire code for a two-family dwelling. What is that? Does that mean there needs, there would have to be a firewall?
Correct, yeah. So if there was, if it was, if it's, there's no fire protection at all, you need to be equal to or greater than five feet. So if you're attached, you now need to have a firewall equal to what you would have to do in a two-family dwelling or duplex. So typically like a two-hour burn wall.
Rachel, I have a question for you, if you don't mind. If you're selling a home that's an ADU, and it used to be 2,400 square feet, and now it's considered 1,600 square feet, is, how is that? Is that addressed when you were selling the home or not?
It's kind of the same thing as a carriage house or a detached ADU. You market it based on the square footage of the primary residence, and then you have a secondary line where that's the total square footage of the property. And same thing, you'd market based on the bedrooms and bathrooms of the primary residence, and you'd say additional bedroom, the bathrooms, and the secondary.
And so are we tabling this, or are we?
So right now, it's discussion only. Then if anybody has anything to add to it, then we would direct city staff to add or subtract and bring it back again. Or we can direct city staff to bring this back as a final ordinance. Do I need a motion for that, Chris? Should I, just to be formal?
You don't necessarily have to have a motion. You can just get my consensus.
Okay.
So I would just like to reiterate, because I know that I'm the oddball in here, that I do feel it needs, that it should be a separate building. And I know that there are many on the board that do not feel that way. Also, still struggle with what really is the difference with it being in a residential R1 neighborhood, why it can't be just an addition to the home. I just want, just want to state that.
Sure, yeah. You have a right to. Okay, so I have, do I have an agreement that you want it brought back for ordinance? Or, I think since I have a disagreement, I'm going to do, I want someone to make a motion, so. So I either need someone to make a motion to accept it, or decline, or something at this point.
I make a motion for the updated policy regarding ADUs to be brought back before the board as an ordinance.
A second?
So I have a motion and a second for the staff to bring back the existing proposal for ordinance for ADUs. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is information reports. Matt, do you have one?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Chris? Thank you. Chief?
If I may, we just had a meeting today in regards to our end-of-summer, beginning-of-fall blood drive. And so that will be held Thursday, August 14th, here at City Hall in the courtroom here. So that'll be from 11:00 to 3:00 on Thursday, August 14th.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Cory?
Norwood, thank you.
Kim? Scott?
Yes, I'd like to give a report on the fireworks display we had, kind of the good and the bad. The good news is I'm very thankful, as a park director, of the support from the board of providing this event to the community. It's truly outstanding. I believe the public really loves it and appreciates it. Scouts, BSA Troop 266 for the parking that they provide, DS Bus Line for the shuttle bus service that they provided, Oak Grove Rental for the temporary lights that they provide. And then we had an issue with the show where a malfunction occurred with a water cake that entered the crowd. We were very thankful that the injuries weren't worse. We've contacted with the individuals that were hurt, and they are minor, and we're very thankful for that. I'm also very thankful for the first responders, the police department, and Snai Valley were there immediately. It went over my head, and I turned around, and they were already there helping and assisting, so I really appreciate that. Without that assistance, things could have been worse. There was a blanket that also caught fire that everybody was scrambling, so it was, it was quite the stressful situation for all. I think several people even are shook up about it, and probably will continue to be. As far as what occurred, it was a water cake. And if you remember, about halfway through the show, there was a water cake that went off into the pond. It's the same style water cake. It was set up to be off in the finale. These water cakes were designed to travel at most 150 feet. This went past three times that distance. The pyrotechnic immediately pulled the batch. Fireworks are sold by batch type, lot numbers, they're tracked. They pulled all that batch in the same lot numbers. They attempted to duplicate the error. They've not been able to duplicate the error. Good thing about Google Maps and all that stuff, they're able to track, you know, where the setup was at to identify any issues. Have not found any issues. They're still working on it. We do have one of the best pyrotechnic companies available. I think this is the fifth company I've ever worked with. I do have some experience with pyrotechnic companies. They are outstanding. They train. They've trained, I think, all the other previous pyrotechnics that we've used. This company has trained them on how to do it, so they're very sensitive to this issue as well. I think they sit over 800 shows, and they've never had this happen. So they are very concerned for the people who got hurt. They're concerned that it even happened. They're working hard to keep it from ever happening again. And they're communicating straight up everything that they, that they're going through, what they're doing. They actually have a pond that's similar to our size pond that they're able, and they said they loved it, our place, because they can test at their test facility, and then they can implement things at our site. So they're going through everything and trying to find out what can be done. Can water cakes continue to be something that's provided? Otherwise, if we can't get confidence, then they wouldn't put water cakes in their shows. The part that's stressful to them is when you buy a water cake or any shell that you see that goes up, those are all pre-charged with a set. And you get a little bit of a variation, but you never get three times the distance. That's a lot more gunpowder. And they're having a little bit of a difficulty tracking down how that could happen. But they are working on it, and it is a China manufactured part. They all come from China. There's, it's not anything we can do about it. We've never had problems before. They haven't changed manufacturers, so it's not like a new vendor or something like that. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that I can, but we are working to find out anything and everything we can to keep it from happening again. I think that sums up everything about the Celebrate Freedom Sparks and Stripes. It was a great night prior to. I do believe it was our largest crowd. We don't have a way to quantify the numbers. I've never seen those numbers that early in the night. Usually people get there about 8:45, and it's packed, but we were seeing it fill up pretty quick, or by 8 o'clock. More people at 6 than I'd ever seen. The lines were steady. Food trucks, we added. Those were long. Not too long. People were happy, going back for even seconds and stuff, so. Does anybody have any questions?
No, thank you for the very good, thorough report.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Yeah. Ladies, any questions about it? Okay. You have anything else, Scott?
That's it. Thank you.
Rachel, you have a report?
I was there, and I was going to say, obviously, besides the malfunction, it was awesome. I have never gotten to go before, because I'm always at the lake on the 4th of July. So it was so fun to see. I was so impressed, and really impressed by the flow of traffic back into town by the police department. I really thought we were going to be sitting in line forever, so we got right back.
They got that down.
Yes, appreciate you guys.
Phones are out, ready, and they're ready, yeah.
Kelly?
I was also there, and as a matter of fact, one of them went off directly in front of us. And I don't even want to focus on that, because I feel like this event was phenomenal. It was, I've been year after year, it was one of the best events that we've had. The crowd was amped up. There were more people there than I've ever seen before, and they're early. People started lining up as soon as gates opened. Everybody was having a blast. It went amazing. And I hate, and I know we all do, I know we all hate that this happened. I don't want it to be overshadowed, because the night was a great success. And the fireworks show up until then was phenomenal, like, one of the best I've seen. So I just want to say thank you to everyone that you've previously thanked, and to you and your staff. Like, I can't even imagine the amount of work that went into that evening, but it was amazing. And our hearts were broken by anyone who got injured, and yes, it was terrifying, but kudos to everyone involved. I thought it was an amazing night.
Thank you.
Melissa?
I just want to say I wasn't there for the first time in many years, because my mom's celebration of life was that night. And thank you all for the roses and the hood. But I'm not surprised that it was a great night, because I go every year with my daughter. And ever since she was little, we've watched it, and it's always a great time. And I'm so glad, and I'm not surprised that our first responders were quick to respond and mitigated the injuries to all. But like, I feel like everybody that works at parks and rec and for the city, I'm not surprised that everything went really well. And I'm glad that the people are okay, and that I expect that this event is still going to be a hit year after year despite this one small incident. It might not be small to the people that are involved, but we have compassion. Might not be small to the people that are involved, but we have compassion for what they went through and I'm glad that they're okay. Anyway, thank you.
Pam?
No report.
All right. Scott, thank you for the report again, and thank you for handling the media and all the challenges with that, so. I'm looking for a motion for executive session.
I make a motion that we adjourn to executive session 610.0213.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn to executive session 610.0213. Any discussion? If not, city clerk, would you please call the roll?
You have a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Rachel, film her?
Yes.
Yes.
We are adjourned to executive session.